We'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our clerk is planning on being here this evening, but she's gonna be late, so in her absent.
I nominate Trustee Thering as clerk.
Can I do that?
Trustee Thering, I assume that means you're willing to serve as temporary clerk?
I am. I am willing.
Any other nominations or discussion? All in favor of making Trustee Thering the temporary clerk until clerk arrives, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thanks for serving. With that, we have an agenda in front of us. Happy to entertain any motions regarding the agenda.
Make a motion to approve, oh.
Were we gonna just go to the?
Let's talk about it then.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda passes unanimously.
Did we miss roll call?
Oh, yeah. I tend to do that when our clerk is not here at the beginning.
I know, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you all for catching on that. Clerk Thering, or temporary clerk Thering, would you be willing to do a roll call of the board, please?
I can. Supervisor Milky?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Trustee Bills?
Here.
Trustee Thering is here. Trustee Brown is excused. Trustee Rice is excused, and Clerk Cody is on our way.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you catching me on that. We have no presentations tonight, no public hearings, so that brings us to item seven on the agenda. Public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. Do we have anybody attending virtually?
I do not.
Seeing no one here virtually, I'll look towards people here. If you, again, if you wish to address the public, state your name and address for the record, and we'll open public comment at 7:02 PM. Seeing no one jumping forward, we'll close public comment at 7:02 PM. That takes us to, we have no closed session proposed tonight. Without objection, I'll move to item nine on the agenda. Reports, boards, and comments. Same status on our list of boards and commissions that we've had for about three weeks now, holding. Anybody need anything on that? Moving on. You saw the monthly activity reports not in here. That'll be coming soon then, I assume. Okay. The Planning Commission, EDA, and ZBA updates by Community and Economic Development Director, Mr. Nanny. You have the floor. Thanks for being here.
Well, thank you very much. Happy to be here. I can report some meetings that happened while I was away at a conference, but to enjoy the videos. Both our Planning Commission and our Economic Development Authority Board met. Our zoning board of appeals body did not meet in August. The Economic Development Authority Board met on August 15th, and the primary business for them was to hear from the Mount Pleasantary Convention and visitor's group. Chris Rowley came and provided a nice presentation. The activities of the CBB, the two DDA districts do provide some funding to that agency, which is a big supporter of businesses in the districts, especially our east DDA district with the hotels. And so it's very good to hear from her. Planning Commission also met on August 15th. Their primary business was continuing discussion on updating the master plan and this building a framework for what that, priorities of that update. They did finish that. What they're working on was actually looking at the priorities from the 2018 plan and identifying those that were important to carry forward, and also identifying the additional items that should be included as part of an update. Also, as part of the Planning Commission meeting, they looked at the 2016 survey questions and had some recommendations related to updating that, some items to include, including talking about renewable energy, some questions on that topic. Good discussion, and looking forward to that process continuing. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Not seeing any. But thank you very much for giving your presentation.
Thank you.
Did miss you at the EDA meeting. For those in the public, our manager, Stu Dryer, was there. We also enjoyed having you there. While we miss Mr. Nanny.
I did provide a suitable substitute.
You did. I actually think it was nice to have Mr. Stu Dryer there for the EDA board, so it was a nice change of pace, but you still were missed.
I agree with the plan on the Planning Commission side, too. It was nice for everybody to, not everybody gets a chance to interact with the manager.
Yeah. With that, moving on to board member reports. Trustee Thering?
Mr. Nanny did a wonderful job. We did. We continued our discussion, finished up on the master plan, I think the policy review, and then had a discussion about the questions. It's all, we're all headed in the right direction, I think, I feel.
I'm assuming the Planning Commission is embracing this, that, I mean, this is an awesome journey to be on doing the master plan. I mean, it's a lot of work. It's a heavy lift.
I think we will be when it's done. We will be, yeah. You don't really get to see everything till it's done, so, once it's done, absolutely.
But you think they're having fun with it at this point?
I am. I can tell you. I don't know if anybody else is, but I'm enjoying the conversation and listening and giving my cent and a half worth every once in a while.
It's fun to vision.
Yeah. It's a lot of learning, too, because sometimes, you know, the way I think isn't the way they think, so I have the blinders on something, and I can only see what's in front of me, and then somebody says something, it's like, wow, okay, I missed something there. Now I've gained it, so.
Right. Yeah, awesome. Trustee Bills?
Yes. I had attended a meeting on August 15th, 2023, Isabella County Commission on Aging Building with the county board commissioners. The main thing there was budget. Budget all the way through that one. And the couple of notes was that the commission on aging has been using 0.88 mil, but they have authority to take a mil, so they're gonna take a whole mil this time. They've been running a deficit for three years. So they're probably gonna take a mil this year and next year, or I don't know if it's every year, but whenever they do it again. I think it's every year. The other one is the county medical care facility is also taking a full mil. They are also doing renovations and things like that, and they have other issues, so they are taking it, and they've been taking that. And the parks and rec, they are taking their .35 mil, and I think they have it for one more year, and I think that's the end of the millage for them. But they're gonna be able to do a whole bunch of renovations in the parks, and they're really excited about some new stuff out at Herrick, so, that they're gonna be doing. The budget's pretty big. It's huge. It's over budget. So they're running a deficit. They're trying to cut costs any way they can, but there are several million over budget, so that's all I'll say about that, because it's preliminary, and they had a hearing on it. Other than that, just usual housekeeping stuff, you know. Nothing, nothing serious. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Trustee Smith? Oops, sorry.
I'm sorry. It's the next one.
I attended the groundbreaking ceremony with Manager Stu Dryer this afternoon. Very nice ceremony, kind of talked about, various speakers talked about the history, how long it's been taken, since the idea was first brought up, I think, in 2016, and the process that they had to go through and everything, so it was nice to be out there for that event today.
I had actually planned on attending, and I was thinking on my calendar, I must have put it in the wrong day. I had it on my calendar for tomorrow at 2:00. Was it 2:00, right?
Yep.
Had it on my calendar for tomorrow at 2:00, and then I'm sitting at my desk, and across my desktop comes a notice from the Morning Sun with the picture of the shovels, and I was like, oh, I can't believe I missed it, so thank you for going.
Certainly.
I have nothing to report. Mr. Nanny covers the EDA pretty well. So with that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Happy to entertain any motions, and as I understand it, Trustee Bills has warrants this month.
I did. Everything's in order. We had a big, huge payment for a bond, but other than that, pretty straightforward stuff.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Smith, support by Bills, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to new business. We have with us a long anticipated service agreement in front of the board with CMU, between CMU and Union Township with regards to the citizen survey. And Mr. Stu Dryer, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. We're asking for consideration to approve a service agreement between Central Michigan University and Union Township in order to conduct a citizen survey in the amount of $20,200. Also authorize the township manager to execute the agreement if approved by the board, and then also amend the township manager's budget in the amount of $4,200 to complete the budgeted funding for that, for this project. The last survey was conducted in the township in 2016. It was administered by staff from Central Michigan University under the leadership of Dr. Mary Center, who's with us tonight. At that time, a report titled "Union Township: Residents' View of Community Issues" reported 2016 survey findings was published and reviewed with the board at that time. The Township Planning Commission is in the early stages of reviewing and updating their master plan. At the same time, the township is looking to update the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Both of those activities require, and we desire, public input into that final product. The survey will be able to accomplish, at least in part, the responsibilities we have to solicit public input, and also the township board has been interested in obtaining a snapshot view of the citizens for your own purposes. And so this project, I think, can accomplish all of those, all of those things. The project will, at the end of the day, so to speak, develop a survey instrument, and for the residents of the township, the questions will focus on their, on the residents, and even beyond the residents, in some case, maybe some of the business community. Trying to gather their thoughts, views, opinions, experiences on how they, how they view the township. At the conclusion of the survey, it'll be analyzed and packaged in a way by CMU staff. A report then will be presented, a written report will be presented to the Board of Trustees along with an oral presentation by Dr. Center. I think a little bit more specifically in terms of the scope of the project. There'll be a six-page questionnaire. It's being developed. It's under development. There will be an opportunity for the board to have their specific input on that. What we're trying to do is gather some additional input, so we have a more complete draft, if you will, before we bring it to the Board of Trustees. There'll also be an opportunity for the citizens to take the survey online. It initially is a print mail survey, and we feel that's, on its face, the best way to start and begin to get the information back to us. It's expected that the survey will be conducted between September and November. And as it relates to the cost, it's $20,200 to be paid in two installments. First installment, 16K at the execution of the agreement, then the balance of the payment at the completion of the project. The approved 2023 manager's budget contained $16,000 for this activity, so as part of this action tonight, we're, I'm asking that you amend that budget by $4,200, so we have that funding all in place. And subsequent to this meeting tonight, assuming the board approves the agreement, we'll make arrangements either with a special meeting or try to clear an agenda of a regular meeting, so that the board, the seven board members can review the, what at that point will be the then-current, most recent draft, and have that presented to you, so that you can add, subtract, do whatever you'd like with it. We do have Dr. Center here tonight. I would, if you wouldn't mind, coming up and just introducing yourself, maybe. I know you know some, but maybe not all the people. I will say that Dr. Center's been busy today. She was traveling from Philadelphia. I think I've only been back in town an hour or two, and so I really appreciate you fitting us in.
Yes. So I am a professor of sociology at Central Michigan University, and I say to my students these days, I have been teaching at Central Michigan University longer than you have been alive. And I think for some of you, I may be able to say the same thing. So I am back from Philadelphia, where I was with 4,500 other sociologists, so that was a very out of the ordinary, out of the ordinary experience. So I just wanna, if I could just say a couple of words. You know, Mr. Thering, in talking about the Planning Commission, said, it was so interesting, because I know what I think, but then I got to hear the way they think, and, you know, suggesting that, you know, we can learn from one another, and the way in which we view the world is not always the way other people do. And that's one of the great advantages of doing, doing a survey, and certainly for elected officials. You each have your perspective, and citizens endorse that. They elected you. But, but, you know, there are people with a wide range of opinions, and I think a survey is at least one way of making sure that you at least give people the opportunity to express their opinions. And sometimes, you know, as board members, you're surprised, because there's something that you think is a really good idea, and you think that residents support that, and then you find that there's less, less support than you thought, which is not to say, you know, a survey is not a vote, right? I mean, it's like voting, that you express your opinion, but board members are free to make decisions at odds with what a survey tells you, but at least you have that, you have that information, which I think is useful. And, you know, we talked about the 2016 survey seven years ago. There also was a 2009 survey, so I think, as Mr. Milky said, you'll have these three data points, and certainly some of the questions, like opinions about township services and some of the land use questions, I think have been constant across those three time periods. But, you know, there certainly will be new questions that you want to add, and, you know, that's, that's fine. And just getting back to this issue of perhaps a special meeting, I always say with surveys, God is in the details. You know, if there's a word that you don't like, we should change it. If a word seems like it's a little bit too far to the right, we should move it left, because when you receive a survey in the mail, you know, all you have is the print paper. You don't have an interviewer, someone you can ask questions to. So if it's not well crafted, if it's not clear to people, people are either gonna answer, but they're answering a question other than the one you thought you're asking. That's really a problem. Or people are just saying, you know, I don't know what they're asking, and they just throw it out. So, you know, I always say, well, you know, criticize what I've done. Make changes. That's not gonna insult me. It's actually people not commenting where I'm concerned. And then we have to make sure that we do some testing, you know, find, maybe, maybe there are some people you know who have lived in Union Township, but then now crossed, and they're living in Mount Pleasantary or something of that sort. Or some snowbird who's now permanently in Florida, because, again, things that seem clear to us, especially after you've read it and revised it and have been at meetings, you know, when someone's looking at it cold, it just isn't, isn't that clear. So, you know, I'm happy to work and revise and revise and revise and revise. Our only constraints, unless you want to change the budget, is, the survey is gonna be this little six-page, you know, fold-out piece here, you know, three panels, three times two, two is six, and then a cover letter. I think you'll need to decide among yourselves who should sign the cover letter, maybe all of you. You want the cover letter to, you want to do this. This is your chance to shape the future of your community. But it can't be longer, because we're, we're trying to stay within the post office's one ounce mail, because otherwise, you know, costs go up fairly dramatically. And one reason, if you're wondering why the costs have gone up since 2016, you know, a key piece is that postage, postage has gone up, so there we are. But I'm happy. Any questions you have, concerns?
Remembering 2016, the mail response was way beyond what, at least my memory is, the mail response was way beyond what I expected. We had a very large percentage respond. Is that your memory as well?
Yeah, it was, no, but in terms of 2016, the completion rate was 30, or the response rate was 38%. So 38% is certainly a lot more than you often find. The other way of looking at it, of course, is 62% didn't respond. But we do have to, in addition to making sure that it's a well-crafted survey and enthusiastic cover letter, the approach is to mail the initial survey. After a week, to mail a postcard that says, if you've completed the survey, thanks a lot. We appreciate your involvement. If you haven't, this is just a reminder. And then for people who haven't responded two weeks after the postcard, which would be three weeks after the initial mailing, is to mail them the whole packet again. If you don't go through that multi-stage process, then your response rate is much, is much lower. Now, the trend, the national trend is for declining response rates. We all get too many surveys. So I think whatever you can do as individuals, whatever can be done on the township website, perhaps, you know, placing friendly, friendly articles in the Morning Sun, you know, if that's possible. Anything to keep this front of mind and to suggest it's a legitimate project, and township officials take your input seriously, you know, all of, all of that, all of that matters.
Trustee Bills?
One of the things we've been struggling with since we were given American Rescue Plan dollars is how to spend it. So we spent a little bit, but we really would like to get the input of the citizens on that. I hope it can be included in.
Yes. No, that's, you know, we've had some preliminary discussions. Some questions, it seemed, would be useful to replicate over, over time. The, there are a larger number of, in the draft, a larger number of questions regarding recreation than in the past, because that may be a particularly relevant issue. But certainly, if they're, if they're topics, if they're issues that are important now, we need to find, find a place, a place for them. It may mean cutting something else, but you want this to be as, as useful to you as possible. And then the other side of it is, make sure the questions are useful. So if there's something that's, oh, that's interesting. Oh, I'd like to know that, but it really doesn't lead to any action, or, or... but it really doesn't lead to any action or or it's only just of interest. It it isn't really something compelling. So, gee, I thought that was interesting, but, you know, those questions have to go because six pages fill up more quickly than you think.
Trustee Smith?
About how many questions would we be looking at on six pages, roughly?
Oh, my, you know, I I never number questions. I never number questions because people see the end and they think that's too many. Oh, let's see, I hate to look, let's see.
That's, you know.
You know, at least thirty or so, I mean, more than, yeah. And one one way, and this is also why I don't number them. A a very common format is is so-called matrix format. So that you have, the the questions are your rows and the response options are the columns. So that the response options in terms of quality of services could be excellent, good, fair, poor. Other things in turn, you know, from, you know, a lot to a little. And the the advantage of that matrix is it becomes clear to people how they're supposed to answer. I don't mean how, like what your responses, oh, I get it, you know, I'm supposed to evaluate, I'm supposed to rate these these items. So it's it becomes easy for the respondent. But it's also, it's it's amazing how many questions you can get in in the the small, small space.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned if we don't get paper follow-up, that there would be like an online version? Did I hear you say?
Yes, yes.
Well, the 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 idea is to is to create an online version of 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 the survey. And I have access to this, you know, kind of state-of-the-art, you know, market-leading online survey package called Qualtrics. And that could be used for in three different ways. There might be someone who who calls or who communicates and says, I don't want to do this paper and pencil survey. This is twenty twenty-three. And then you say, well, go here. Now, there there are fewer people like that than you might think because if something arrives in the mail, you just pick up a pencil and and fill it out. But that gives you or gives the township staff something to to say to people. The the other thing is to is to put that link on on the township website, but making it clear, answer this once, don't just do the prints and then, you know, then then repeat. So that's that's a second reason for having the the online survey. And and the third is, even though I don't know that this has been been fully fully resolved, is if if there's a desire to communicate to people who are are in some of the 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 rental properties that are not single-family properties, you know, some of the, I mean, there are many places, but, you know, I'm thinking like the Bluegrass. And and there, the issue is if there's a way to communicate with them to make them aware of the online.
Yeah, residents that aren't property owners.
Right, right. Or renters where you know the address, because there could be a renter, but but.
I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, we went through that last time, didn't we? Adding to the property owners list, we added the renters. I forgot we had done that.
Yeah, yeah.
And so the reason I asked about the online is we we struggled with that in sixteen, worried about people from, I don't know, Ionia County deciding to submit a survey.
That's right.
Or people going, I'm going to submit the survey twelve times because I really want my voice heard.
Yeah, that's right.
But I'm assuming the tool you're talking about probably helps with some of that.
No, actually, in this case, in this case, it it doesn't because it just is a y'all come kind of survey. So the the way to deal with that is to never combine the the two the two data sets. So the 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 mailed survey, you know, going to people where you you know who they are. I mean, you you won't know who answered, how they answered, but but you know, these are people in the township. That analysis will be separate from anyone who answered the online survey.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, because other it's otherwise, you just you you just don't.
Without those controls.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Now, on the online survey, the first question you ask is, do you live in Union Township? Now, of course, people can say yes when when they don't. But I don't think this is going to be so exciting. And while you don't want it to be too long, because at some point people tire, it's not so short that I'm not sure that anyone would want to answer it twelve times. But but that is, you're quite right, I mean, that is that is a constraint and you just have to acknowledge it, acknowledge it upfront.
Yeah, well, that last survey, I remember, it was lengthy to go through.
Yeah.
You had to dedicate a little bit of time to do it, which is another reason I was so impressed by the response rate we got, that there were that many people in the township that gave that much of their time to do it.
But partly you want to make sure that, and it it may be some of the, you know, the the rescue funds, you know, may be something of interest, but you you want to ask questions that, you know, people have some some interest in. And and suggest honestly that that, you know, the board wants to know people's people's opinion. And perhaps with the master planning coming up, that that's something where people can see that their their involvement will have an obvious endpoint and an obvious product. I will say, I will say one thing, and you don't want this. I did a community survey a few years ago where there was an extremely contentious issue. And the board I was dealing with said, well, we're we're pretty split fifty-fifty up here. And I thought, you know, no community is split fifty-fifty. It was like fifty-one percent on this floor. I mean, I couldn't, I I ran the numbers and then I reran the numbers. And that, of course, engendered a great deal of interest in the survey. You don't want that, you don't want that kind of, oh, we got a high response rate. People are watching. So if things are more peaceful, you might lose a couple percent on the survey, but say, thank goodness.
Yeah, right, understood. Well, I really appreciate you making extra time, especially after a travel day to stop here.
Thank you, Doctor.
Do you have other questions?
Board?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is anybody's ready? Make the motion to approve the service agreement between Central Michigan University and Union Township in order to conduct a citizen survey in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand two hundred dollars and authorize the township manager to execute the agreement and amend the township manager's budget in the amount of four thousand two hundred.
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Bills. Further discussion? I'll just add, I I think twenty thousand is a steal for what the value that we get out of this.
Yes.
And I do appreciate and understand costs have gone up, but nonetheless, it's it's twenty thousand dollars well spent.
Yes, absolutely. And we've been waiting a minute for this, so I hope it soon.
Seven years. And it will, I am really excited about the idea of being able to look, well, in sixteen, we had the second survey with many of the same questions. And you could actually call it a trend, kind of, if you have two dots. But it'd be nice to see if what was important to our residents in sixteen is still important in twenty-three. So no more discussion. We have a motion to approve the contract with CMU for twenty thousand two hundred dollars. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
You don't need to stick around. Don't don't feel obligated.
Have a nice dinner.
Not that you have to leave, but yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, have a good day.
Uh, that brings us to item eleven B on the agenda regarding bids for trade-in of two two thousand six Ford F-150 trucks and recommendation of purchase of three twenty twenty-three four-by-four half-ton half-ton crew cabs, uh, four-door trucks. Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this, please?
Thank you. The purchase of the three trucks that are in front of you tonight is part of the adopted approved twenty twenty-three budget. Two of these trucks will be utilized in the Community and Economic Development Department, primarily by the building official and the then split maybe between the rental inspector and our primary code enforcement, which is Mr. Gallinay. And in the budget document, we had talked about trading in the Escape. We're going to hang on to the Escape, turn in one of the trucks. And the reason we're holding on to the Escape is with the hiring of the full-time assessor so they can do their their field field work. Bids were taken in July of twenty twenty-three. We received two bids. And the low-responsive bid was Crepeau Ford. The purchase of the vehicles are budgeted in both the general fund and the split then between the water and the wastewater fund. The value of the trade-ins will go back to the respective funds that, accounting funds that they were bought from. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
It says, subject to factory availability, that do we pay for it upfront and then whenever they get it, they?
I know we placed an order, I don't know if we.
No, we'll place an order and then when the trucks get here, then that's when we pay for it.
Okay.
They'll take the trade-ins and then they'll pay for them.
So it could be next year even.
It could be, yeah.
Is there any additional work that needs to be on a truck, like any guards over the back windows?
Sorry.
Is there any additional things that need to be added on to the trucks to make them usable for the township? Like guards over the back so the back window doesn't get smashed or?
These trucks do not come with the lights. They weren't, we put them in the bid, but they weren't available through the factory, so we'll put the lights. Have to purchase the lights that we put on the top of the trucks. The one for utilities, they might be toolbox or stuff like that.
Okay.
It's getting pretty hard for the guys to get the trucks. But other than that, no.
Okay, nothing major, nothing, okay.
We tried to cover everything that we could, that we could get in the truck, right down to, we did the hands-free with the phones. So that, you know.
Were legal?
Yeah, comply with the laws, right?
All the trucks we've been recently buying, we we make sure that's.
Okay. So that's another good reason to get rid of the two thousand six. That's what I can talk, you know.
Yes, yeah, I actually thought of that, was reading through this as far as the hands-free part. That's why I asked about the radios, didn't know if they use their phones in the car or if they use radios. If they're using radios, they need hands-free. I do like the idea of the Escape for our assessor, that's, if nothing else, it's a safety issue for our assessor. So people know that when she arrives in the property that she's their official.
Yes, all, you know, the Escape currently has the township logo on the side. And then as it relates to safety, and that's another, glad you mentioned that, we are of the opinion that from the code enforcement perspective, it sends a little different message if somebody's rolling up in a reasonably large cherry-red pickup truck with the logo on the side is opposed to a meek and mild Ford Escape rolling up in front of your house. I think it just sends a little different message.
Any other questions for manager, comments? Anybody feel like, any kind of motions or not?
I can do it, I just have to get back to the page.
Two, two trucks will be used, okay, and one truck will be used for, I'm, I know you said it, would you say it again?
Two trucks will be located within the Community and Economic Development Department General Fund to be used for their activities. They have code enforcement, everything from nuisance to unsafe structures. We have a rental inspector that's out in the field, essentially doing enforcement. And then we have the building official.
Okay, yep, thank you.
I'm clerk.
I just want to ask a quick, I was going to ask the question to why it was coming out of the different funds, but after explaining where the trucks are going to be used, then I don't have to ask that question, is what?
One of the trucks is dedicated, usage-wise, being purchased with, split fifty-fifty between the water fund and the sewer fund. So that those rate payers are paying for that truck and the general taxpayer through the village is paying for the other ones.
Yeah, so when you were explaining it, I didn't have a question anymore, so I was like, well.
I move to authorize the trade-in of two two thousand six Ford Ford one F-150 trucks in the amount of twenty-eight hundred and the purchase of three twenty twenty-three four-by-four and a half ton, four-by-four half-ton crew cab Ford trucks, four-door trucks in the amount of one forty-four thousand three oh nine and eighteen cents from Crepeau Ford. The net amount of the transaction is a hundred and forty-one thousand five oh nine and eighteen cents. Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Cody. I'm only going to make one other comment. I have a two thousand two Tahoe that I'm proud is still running. When I look at two thousand six, I can't believe the township has two thousand six pickup trucks that are still operating.
One of them's not, just the transmission just went out and it.
Oh.
One we got eight hundred dollars for.
Oh, also good to know.
Good job, Brian.
Just so you know.
Yeah.
We took it right to the end.
But, yeah, I'm impressed they've been on the road that long, that, yeah, especially with the work that they're put through, so. So we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? All in favor of purchasing the four trucks for the net amount of one hundred forty-one thousand five hundred nine dollars eighteen cents, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item D on new business, policy governance two point nine, collaboration with other entities.
I thought there was discuss C.
Did I miss? I thank you, appreciate it. Um, yeah, thank you, I felt like there was something else. Eleven C in the agenda, adoption of the Isabella County Hazard Mitigation Plan. You all read two hundred and fifty pages of that, right? It was lengthy.
Right, I know.
I read some of it. I skipped it.
Uh, Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this, please?
Thank you, there is a staff report that begins on page sixty of your agenda packet. Hazardous mitigation generally is any action taken before, during, or after a disaster that permanently eliminates or reduces the long-term risk to human life property. They can be comprised of natural, societal, technological type of hazards. So that's the type of, that that's the framework that we're trying to mitigate against. Isabella County, through their emergency operations, Center took the lead in this. And they are responsible for the development of the plan with the input from all the cities and villages and townships within the county that are interested in participating in this. The plan itself, and I hope you didn't all read two hundred and sixty pages of it, but it is pretty pretty broad, there's emphasis on hazards that that are actually likely to occur here in central Michigan, flooding, snow, wind, that that type of disaster. It did involve the active participation of of Union Township, represented by myself, and then city personnel, all the various other townships in the county. They all had input into this. The ones that are part of the plan, each of them will be taking it to their respective boards for adoption of a similar resolution that speaks to both supporting the plan and concept and supporting the township's activities as it relates to. and supporting the township's activities as it relates to trying to implement some of the things that may come out of the plan, so that future hazards are in fact mitigated against. So I think that is all I have on that, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Not seen anybody. The only place I struggled, and I'll admit I didn't read every word, I think it was two hundred and thirty-two pages for the main document and whatever it was for the other resolution that was attached there. In general, it seemed fairly high-level, covered a tremendous number of topics. Everything from climate to wildfires, I mean, pipeline, safety, um, I mean, I couldn't enumerate them all right now because it just went from one, one item to the next. What I didn't understand, I, not that I have issue with this, I'm excited to see this plan, um, is by voting for this resolution, what commitment is the township actually making? Other than to support the pla, what, what does that mean to support the plan, I guess, from your perspective?
From my perspective, it, it'll range from... I'll say allowing me, that's probably too strong, but, uh, to continue and to be actively involved in the EOC operations. We meet monthly, we do tabletop exercises, we did one for tornadoes a couple of weeks ago. So one, it signals to me that I should be at that table. And, and then also it signals to me that if there are expenses within my authority, that that would be a reasonable thing that I can approve. If it's gonna help effectuate the plan. Union Township has more of a support role within the context of the broader plan, it's a county plan. But each of the, the two primaries, primary supporting agencies are Union Township and the city. We have trucks, we have equipment that we can then deploy into the, into the field. Adoption of the plan also will make the counties more competitive when they are applying for FEMA grant monies. And, so you, you're supporting the plan, you're, you're not committing any specific dollar amount of resources to it, but you are signaling that hazard mitigation is important to the township. And it's very possible that I could be back in front of the board with requests for certain actions, activities, purchases, that, um, you would have to ultimately approve. I think your governance policy speaks to risk management, risk avoidance. And this is part of that.
That's helpful, I, that's kind of how I took it, but the, the document, as I read, at least the, the big chunks that I did read, listed more all the different types of potential hazards, uh, versus what it might mean when the rubber hits the road, what does that commit the township to if something happens, right? So it commits us to continuing our activity towards hazard mitigation. As well as, um, if we need to step up to the plate, then we've kind of signaled that-
In our support plan, which is part and parcel of that document, dur- during the flood, that was an emergency. And at that point, we weren't mitigating, we were responding. But that, I have certain authorities under that to deploy staff and others than we did. And from a mitigation point of view, um, you know, and I think we'd be doing a lot of this work anyways, but for instance, um, Ms. Smith has been involved in working with a group that involves stormwater management. Well, that's, that's a form of hazard mitigation. When you get seven inches of rain, you know, trying to improve that system.
I think it's great.
We seem to have once-in-a-century rainfall every three years now.
Well, I think, you know, uh, the local governments have to work together in, in the case of an emergency. And I think being prepared is the only way to be, to plan ahead, you know?
And I didn't mean by my question, just for clarity, um, I wasn't not supportive, I just wanted to hear what that meant to the manager as far as, um, what authority are we giving the manager essentially by, um, stating this resolution? And I appreciate your answer.
I move to adopt a resolution that both supports and allows participating in the Isabella County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Support.
Uh, motion by Bill, support by Smith, any further discussion? Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call, uh, vote of the board regarding the resolution for Isabella County Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Supervisor Melkey?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes.
Resolution passes unanimously, thank you, Clerk Cody. And now that brings us to eleven D. Policy Governance 2.9, Collaboration with Other Entities. Uh, Mr. Stuhldrer, this is yours, uh, you have the floor.
Thank you, and again, the staff report is on page sixty-three of your agenda packet. This is Policy 2.9, Collaboration with Other Entities. This is an annual review that's to take place per the schedule in August of each year. The policy wording is not very long. In order to maximize achievement of ends, township managers shall not fail to explore strategic partnerships and intergovernmental cooperation and to optimize collaboration with other entities in the region where appropriate. That's your policy statement. I interpret that to indicate that, uh, professional relationships will be developed with community partners, whether they be public, private, or nonprofit. And that, as appropriate, engage those partners in exploring collaborative service delivery opportunities, area-wide communication efforts. And that an appropriate focus will be placed on the region and not just solely within the corporate limits of the township. That's how I interpret that policy statement. I think that's, um, a reasonable interpretation based on the wording itself and what my experience is in, in seeing the benefits of collaboration, not just for your own community, but for the larger region that we all, all live in. I have several data, data points throughout the report, I'm not gonna go over them, not all of them, but I will highlight a couple. We have our EDA that's, um, I think very active in, uh, participating with a number of organizations across the community. They provide financial support for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Middle Michigan Development Corp., which is a regional-wide economic development entity. They co, the EDA cosponsors the annual festival of banners. That's coordinated and run by Art Reach, but also, um, involves other cosponsors, the city, Isabella Bank, Mercantile Bank, Saikna Chippewa Indian Tribe. I, township manager, continue to support, um, well, I provide technical support, I'll say, to the Mid-Michigan Aquatic Recreation Authority as appropriate and when asked. They are, they are clear that the township's involvement, and we've been pretty involved up, so far up to date, has been in just trying to help the authority be successful in being able to present to the electorate the question of, do you want a, um, aquatic center or not? There's been a couple of times when I've been in different meetings where it's been indicated that Union Township supports the, um, stand, the, the physicality of the aquatic center. And I've clarified that to say that no, that that, that is, that is not accurate. All we're doing is supporting, um, this part of their path.
Good question. I'm sorry, our, our clerk was looking at you odd, but with the statement, but I, I think, would you, if I can just paraphrase, um, what you're stating is township's supportive of the path to ask the question. We're not saying yea or nay to the question at this point, that's for the electorate to decide.
And we have, the board has not taken on any position through resolution or anything as to whether or not you support the existence of the aquatic center. What you have supported very, um, actively is having the authority created so that they can do the work to take the issue in a rational, logical manner to the electorate. It may be that you're asked to take a position as a board as you get closer to election, and that's when the board would make a statement as to whether or not you're in favor of it or not. Just went over the hazardous, uh, Hazard Mitigation Plan, one of the data points is the township participation in that project, update that plan. Our Community Economic Development Director is the chairperson of the Airport Joint Operations Board. That board consists of representatives from the tribe, the city, the, uh, MMDC, uh, the Chamber, and, um, I don't know if the Chamber's on there or not, I don't think they are. And I may be missing something, but it's a multi-jurisdictional body that's trying to provide, uh, input to the city as it relates to the management of the airport. I am a member and is, is of, of the Mid-Michigan Development Corporation, I'm a board member. I'm also in, on the board of the Executive Committee, so we're participating in that regional effort. Um, Public Services Director sits on and leads the Mid-Michigan Cable Consortium. Also is our liaison with the, um, Isabella County Road Commission. The township helps fund the epicenter publication, which I think is, each year that goes by is, is gaining more and more readership and, and I really think that's a, a nice, uh, publication. We, we do a lot of work with, uh, CMU, particularly as it relates to pathways. And that work has been going on, it continues. And I am also on a subcommittee that's trying to figure out what to do next with the County Materials Recovery Facility, the MIR. And there are other items within this report, so I, I think we do spend a, a good amount of time looking beyond our borders. If it, um, makes sense for the township and involves a larger region, I always want to make sure that we have a seat at the table represented by somebody from the township. Elected official, township manager, staff, um, so that everybody knows that, um, we are here. And I, I think somewhat related, I don't know if you can draw a direct line, but there was an article in the paper not too long ago that talked about Bandit Industries locating in the township. And you may not have noticed, I did right away, that they referenced Union Township three or four times as it relates to Bandit. In the old days, it just would have been Bandit was relocating to Mount Pleasant. They didn't say that, they said Union Township. And I think that's important, too. Be happy to answer any questions?
One thing I thought could be added to this list is all the work you and your staff, uh, dealing with MDOT, especially with the Pickard Project. So MDOT, I mean, probably not just that project, but I'm sure there's probably routine conversations you or your staff has with them as well.
Yes, I believe both these individuals, in different maybe arenas, are often at the table with MDOT. And by having them there, our EDA infrastructure that is all torn up, I think having it restored the way it's gonna be restored, and they understand our expectations and they've agreed to that, wouldn't have happened if we weren't fighting for ourselves at that table.
I, I'll just clarify on that, too, that, just so there's not misunderstanding, like the, uh, irrigation system is something that uh, EDA will have to reevaluate whether we put back in or not, and they're pursuing that journey now. Um, so MDOT wasn't willing to replace that, but they were willing to be a partner on much of the other, uh, infrastructure that the EDA invested in there, so. And that would, and that would not have happened without Mr. Nanny's involvement.
And just coordinate the times on, when, in order to get the lights back up, you know, coordinate with their construction schedule and all that other good stuff, instead of having to try to do it after it's all done. You know, that's kind of important, too.
Yeah, I'm not sure if left up to them, those lights had even, would you locate them now, they'd be in a scrap pile somewhere. So that's all I have, thank you.
Uh, we do not have a review forum on this, but, um, I do just wanna, I mean, I, I'm assuming, uh, there's no concern about compliance in this. But I do always want to ask, uh, regarding policy wording, any issue with policy wording? Because now's a great time to update that particular piece if we want.
No.
And manager's interpretation's always important on this. Read that, you're good with that interpretation?
Yes.
Yep.
Moving on, uh, eleven D, uh, Policy Governance 4.2, Accountability of the Township Manager. this is really more for the, the board, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
The, the only thing I want to, uh, make sure is clear is that the title of the policy might, you, you might imply that this has something to do with evaluating performance, accountability to township manager. It does not, this has to do with more... How does the board interact with the manager? And does the board stay in their lane? Does the manager and the administration stay in their lane? That type of, type of thing.
Thanks. Yeah, so this, this isn't the evaluation part, but it's on our agenda next, right? So you, you've all read through the policy. Do you, do you feel we're in compliance, non-compliance?
Yes.
Yes, compliance?
Compliance.
Any objections? Do you feel, and I, and I guess we can look at it both ways here, because it's, it's a little bit of interaction on what the manager does and what we do, right? So are there ways that the board can improve the process in any way? Regarding whether, how we view the man- how we view the manager, how the, what the manager's guardrails are here, and what our guardrails are?
I'm good.
So, I, I guess I only have one comment. And the basis of why this bothers me is not important right now, other than, so this is in 4.2.2.1, so it's the second to last, last paragraph. It's, it's a lengthy one sentence, and it just has to do with township manager providing overall direction, training, supervision, evaluation, discipline, and termination. And you remember that we added termination to this one a while back. And it's, the very last part says either directly or through department heads. And the only thing that came to mind with that is we, we only have two fuzzy gray areas in all of this, and that is we have two department heads that are elected officials, the treasurer and the clerk. And if the treasurer needs to hire someone, or the clerk needs to hire someone, how does that process work, how we interpret this? That wasn't clear to me. My assumption from this is it has to go through the manager still, right? Is that how you interpret it?
Unless it's a deputy, that's true.
Unless it's a deputy, okay. That's helpful.
I knew that.
You did? Thank you. Well, I just wanted clarification, because when I read that, I was like, oh, what does that mean for the two of you?
Like, election workers, though, they have to take the training and everything, that's a little different, but, I mean, I still say I need this money and mark that.
Yeah, so you work with, in that case, township manager to make sure that gets done, essentially.
The board is, the funding is responsible for funding, so you have influence that way. When it comes to the deputy clerk or the deputy treasurer, other than funding, not even, I mean, I don't have any authority over that. That's completely those individuals hire, and the board doesn't even have any authority over who they hire. The board can decide if they're going to get paid or not, but they can't decide who.
Right. Well, that's helpful. So, thank you, yes.
No, on this, is this appropriate to ask the manager if he thinks we're in compliance with this, if he thinks we're staying in our lanes?
I, you know, I think that's always a good question, yeah.
So, I would like, you know, if manager would feel comfortable in answering that question or not, I mean, like to know if we're messing up.
Right. No, I appreciate the opportunity. I think every year I've been here almost, that question's been asked of me, and with the exception of maybe a period of time, a while back, where I said, no, I didn't think the board was in compliance, this board, and, and the number of years in the past, I've not had any problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
I think the board's in compliance.
Okay. Do a gentle slap on the hand if not.
Well, you weren't on the board, so.
Anything else on this issue?
I was trying to remember when, but I remember now.
All right, so we're moving on, then?
So, if you ask a question, I'll answer it honestly.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
That's a good question, I appreciate you bringing that up. Uh, that brings us to item 11F on our agenda, which is the performance evaluation form that we were all given, I think, two meetings ago, three? Two? For us to fill out. I did my homework. I wish we had an entire board here. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that.
Would the schedule allow, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I mean, if we're going to go through this, I really don't want to go one by one by one and say who answered each one, but, I mean, I'd like to say my comments if, again, but, you know, do you want to go through this time with not ruining people?
I, I think that's a question. I guess what, what I'd like to ask this board is, my personal preference is, it'd be nice to have a full board. But what we can't guarantee is that the next meeting, we have a full board, but we're down two tonight, which is somewhat unusual.
And it's significant.
And it's significant. I'd rather have all the voices we can get here. I did, I did discuss with our manager earlier today as far as scheduling, because this is one step of a few things, right? We, we go through this process, we then do a formal presentation of the board of trustees' performance review with the manager versus the individuals coming up with our overall performance evaluation. That leads then into a contract. We have an annual contract with the manager that we either renew or we don't renew. And if we do renew, what are the terms? And that helps for the basis for what those terms may be. And so, and then that leads into budget season, right? And so, so there is some, a workflow that happens here, and so, looking at the calendar, I don't think we're jeopardizing anything if we were to table this for a fuller board at the next meeting. Just can't guarantee we're going to have seven then.
Would you like a motion on the table? To table it?
If you feel so moved, I've kind of voiced my feeling, and I'm okay with whatever the board decides.
I would like to make a motion to the table, the discussion on Andrew Stooldryer's performance evaluation until the next meeting.
I support.
So, a motion by Smith, support by Thering, to table item 11F until the next meeting? Any discussion on that?
And that would mean the next meeting, regardless, we're going to go through then, correct?
I would think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if, if we have six, then we're one better.
I mean, everybody should have their homework done, so if you can't be at the meeting, turn your homework in.
Turn your homework in.
Brian, did I send mine to you? Did you want to collate these numbers before?
No, I'd, I'd rather do it after, and, and this is probably a good discussion for trustee Smith, too. I think I mentioned this last time, but what, what happened is we went through it, and to your comment, Clerk Cody, we went through each individual one, we each gave our scores, and then offered, if you chose to, why you gave the score you did, because sometimes six of us might give a four, and someone gives a two, and you want to know why that person gave a two, and then they give their argument, and they go, oh, yeah, that makes sense, I'm going to lower mine to a three. And, and so, for me, it was always helpful to hear the other trustees disclose the reason behind their scoring, because I may not think of something the same way. So, it's, what's happened in the past is we've, some of the trustees have adjusted their scores during the meeting based on comments from other trustees. I found that helpful.
Yeah. I've even adjusted my score in the last week or two on a couple of ones, so it's kind of like, so, yeah, I'm sure when we have the discussion, you've been on, you know, I came on in February, so you've been another, you know, four or five months, you, you know, I'm going to value what your opinions are on some of your responses, too.
Yeah, I mean, from a, what's our agenda looking like? I know it's probably a little too hard to tell, but, I mean, are we looking at a full agenda? Are we looking at a manageable agenda?
The next meeting is the 13th. I mean, you, you need to do this. I will manage the agenda so you have enough time to give it attention.
Yeah.
But, it, well, it was probably, it would have been denied. There are a fair amount of things on the agenda tonight, and if you would have kept with this one, you would have been here till 9:30, and I don't like to have the agenda so full that you guys are here all night. But, I have the working list, I just don't have it in my mind right now, but, it, it'll be on, if, if the motion passes, this will be on the agenda for the 13th.
I just like the opportunity of having as many as we can.
Me, too.
With the knowledge that it's happening next week, or in two weeks regardless, and to get your stuff turned in, whether you can be here or not in that respect.
Yeah, so, back to your question, then, I, I prefer to take your, if it's okay, take the responses after the meeting? That, that allows you to do any adjustments you might want? And then, what we've done in the past is I've taken those, aggregated the scores, and kept all the comments.
Yeah.
Individually, so the manager can see all the comments. In fact, I wanted to send you the evaluation from last year, but I forgot to do that. Probably helpful for you to see the, what we gave to the manager last year.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? We have a motion to table this item 11F until 13th of September. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item 12 on the agenda, extended public comment. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you please, if you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and we'll open up extended public comment at 8:16 PM.
There's no one online.
Thank you, see no one online, no one jumping forward in present. We'll close extended public comment at 8:16 PM. Mr. Stooldryer, item 13 on the agenda is manager comments. It is yours.
Thank you, and I just have two tonight, a reminder that the fitness court ribbon cutting is scheduled for September 7th at 10:00 AM in the morning, and as many of you that can be there is possible, would be great. The other thing, I just want to kind of begin to give the board a bit of a heads up. As, as you know, or may recall, the township had budgeted some money in 2023 to continue with the CMU pathway. We did pathway section B a few years ago, and pathway section A, which is basically just a straight pathway from Deerfield up to Dennison, running next to the Smart Zone property or building. Running into a little bit of difficulty with that. We have the funding, we have the engineering done by CMU, they're ready to proceed. They submitted their paperwork for formal approval to both the city and the road commission a couple of weeks ago, maybe, or a few weeks now at this point, and both entities denied that application, and they're hung up on signaling and crosswalks. In the city's case, it's on Dennison, across Dennison, you've got a pathway, you've got a curb cut, you've got striping, you've got some signage, and same thing existing on Deerfield Avenue. And so, I'm having a meeting with, internal meeting, to decide essentially how much political capital I'm prepared to spend to get that put in. And I'm prepared to spend a bit, I think. But I just want to let you know that that's the status of it right now. I'm pretty comfortable that, at the end of the day, we'll be successful. And I know everybody has their reasons for different things, and we do, too, when we're the authorizing and approving agency. But I want this in, and I think the board does, too.
It's, it sounds, all sounds reasonable. Those are reasonable things.
Very important.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to add one more thing to your list, if I may. So, at the, two meetings ago, maybe it was three, I, I asked you about the sidewalks that were going in here with regards to the, whether we have ADA ramps or not, because I was concerned that by state law, that if we put them in this corner, we'd have to put them on all the corners, and was that part of the scope and/or budget? And your response was, no, those aren't going in. And then I had, had a message from trustee Thering asking that same question, and I said, no, they're not going in, based on the question I had asked you. And so, in our meeting together, by the way, I, I did ask our manager about that and followed up, saying I thought that wasn't going to happen, so from that, I'll let you explain where we are.
It was not part of the original scope, and Rodney, correct me if I'm wrong, but the road commission approved those, so they went in.
Right, the road commission approved what, what was, what was put up, and so, yes, it was, it had installed what they approved.
So, this sense of if you put one in, you have to put another in, is more road commission within the state policy and practice versus state statute?
I, I, I can't speak to the, to the minutia of the rules they, that work under, only to say that when we dealt with it at Remus, it was actually the MDOT that was governing that particular practice. So, here, the road commission has, has chosen something else.
Yeah. Road commission has jurisdiction, they permitted it down there, MDOT had jurisdiction, they had a different requirement.
So, my apology, trustee Thering's for misinforming you.
I'm glad, I'm glad to see it was there. I mean, it's a start.
But I, I was really curious when I saw them, I thought, well, I just had told you that they're not going in, and then...
Geez, you should have, you should have wondered what I was thinking about you.
Anyways, thank you for the explanation, I'm, I'm sure you wondered about it since you saw them.
I mean, I, I was glad to see them. I was glad to see it. We're right there, we're doing the work, and it's, I think it shows that township is leading by example in that respect, getting it in. Now, we'll see where things go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us to item 14 on our agenda, final board member comment. Trustee Smith?
Nothing.
Trustee Bills?
I saw some changed leaves on a maple tree today.
Uh-oh.
Just letting you know, the end is near.
Thank you, trustee Bills. I appreciate it. Clerk Cody? Trustee Thering?
As I continued to drive past our new fitness court center, I seen, what I see is new people, and they're utilizing it. Not a lot of people all at once, but I see, I recognize it, I didn't see them the last time, and I didn't see them the last time, so I'm seeing, I'm seeing some people actually using each station. There was two or three people each on an individual station doing the, doing the exercise, so. It's nice to see.
I'm going to piggyback on that. So, not that I sent out, I, I really appreciate the images that were, that you sent out to the, to the board. I appreciate the coverage we got with some of the local media, and, but then, because of that coverage, I started getting texts or messages from residents that were like, this is really cool. So, I've only heard positive feedback from that so far.
Me, too.
Yeah.
Yep, and a lot of people know about it, and also the, the aquatic authority as well. They seemed, a lot of people, I was talking to people at a party recently, a lot of people knew about it. They were, they didn't know the details, so I started filling them in with it.
And with that, our agenda's done. I'm happy to entertain any motions for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Support?
Motion by Bills, support by Smith. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Matt? We are adjourned.